Good evening. It's Monday, June 24th, a little bit after 7:00. Athens City Council is meeting in committees tonight. We will be meeting in two committees. The Planning and Development Committee, which will be chaired this evening by a member, Michelle Pappy, because Chairwoman Chris Fall is out of town. And Finance and Personnel Committee, as usual, will have much to say. However, before we get started, we're going to take care of some exciting business. And Law Director Lang is going to lead us on.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. President. Jennifer, could you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Jennifer Cochran, do solemnly swear...
I, Jennifer Cochran, do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States of America...
Of the United States of America...
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution...
Of the State of Ohio...
Of the State of Ohio...
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
Honestly...
Honestly...
And impartially...
And impartially...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Of Athens City Councilmember...
Of Athens City Councilmember...
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
Member Cochran, congratulations.
Thank you.[101.14][101.14](APPLAUSE)
Jennifer Cochran has been appointed by the Athens City Democratic Committee to fill out the term, the remainder of the term, that Ilahu Ghazni has left, as far as we know, left the country. And so, I have asked her to take Ilahu's, take Michelle Pappy's position, actually, on the Transportation Committee, because Michelle has moved up to Chair, which was Ilahu Ghazni's position. So, I believe there's some interesting things going on with transportation that Jennifer will be jumping right in. So, we're going to begin with our Planning and Development Committee. Again, Member Michelle Pappy is going to be chairing that committee tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. First on our agenda was the Environment and Sustainability Commission, but the gentleman who was going to make the presentation is not here, so we may give him a few more minutes, and we'll run through the other Planning and Development Committee items that we have tonight. The first thing we needed to discuss was the Dowler Property Acquisition. We've been discussing that now for quite some time. It's a property on the south side of Athens. I don't know if the administration would like to talk a little bit and update us where we are to date. Sure. I'd like to bring Paul Loeb. There he goes. He's ready. He's actually been the one with direct communication with the Dowler family and their intentions regarding this property.
I could tell you the legislative...
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome. Good evening, everyone. Paul Loeb, Planner for the City. Just to start with, I would like to point out that about two years ago, or two and a half years ago, when Councilmembers Reisner, Pappy, and Patterson were sworn in on their very first council meeting, I was the first speaker.[252.54][252.54](LAUGHTER) I get to do it again, and I don't come to council that often. So, welcome to the city.
Thank you.
We are talking about the Dowler property, which you can see right there, highlighted. It is a beautiful, undeveloped, 15-acre parcel of land on the south side of Athens. The Dowler family, which developed the subdivision to the immediate northwest there on, the name of that street is eluding me right...
Cardiff.
Is that Far Hills?
Far Hills, thank you, Mayor. Yes, on Far Hills. The Dowler family, years ago, developed that subdivision. They bought that 15-acre land, or piece of land, along with that, with the intention of subdividing that to build single-family homes. The housing market changed. The cost to build a subdivision for single-family homes significantly rose. The land is topographically challenged, and they have held this property for years. And they approached us about a year ago with an interest in possibly selling this piece of land to the city. The Athens County Auditor has assessed the property at a price of $58,000 as of today. The Dowlers have approached us with the intention of selling the property for a sum of $40,000, and as part of that, they would request that the city pay $25,000 of that $40,000 price. And members of the Dowler family, who no longer live in Athens, would contribute $15,000 towards that $40,000. They are asking that we do that. Indeed restrict the property as open space, recreation land, similar to the way we did restricted lands at Sales Park and lands at the Athens Trail, with the intention, long-term, of making connections in that south side area to create a smaller park, but similar in concept of a Sales Park. About two years ago, you can see there's like a triangle-shaped parcel that touches that northernmost parcel line, which taps on Cardiff. That was a piece of land, it's five acres, that was...
Right there.
Correct, Mayor. That was a five-acre parcel that was donated to the city by the Gowandi family. Dr. Gowandi was a long-term resident of the city. He bought that piece of land years ago with the intentions of building a single-family home, decided against that, and decided that they wanted to stay on their home on Sunny Side, and through wonderful generosity, donated that city, land of the piece, to the city, which we also did restricted as open space, recreation land. The long-term goal is to try to find connections in that area, along with the piece of land that is owned by the Athens Rotary Club, Camp Rotan, which is, excuse me for standing in the way here. Camp Rotan is this large tract right here off of Longview. And then the Gowandi Park is right here, the Gowandi Preserve, and then this is the Dowler. The intention, to get back on the microphone, the long-term intention there, working with the Arts Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, is to find connections either through property acquisitions, or through deed restrictions or conservation easements, working with the Athens Conservancy, to make connections there for trails, for open space, for that type of passive recreation on the south side. The Camp Rotan, the Athens Rotary Club, they are already excited to make these, this happen if we can make the land connections. The Dowler family were members of Athens Rotary. Camp Rotan is also used for Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. The Dowler family, when they lived in Athens, were very active in scouting, and so there was a really nice layers of serendipity that occurred here, just through an email that we received from Jim Dowler, who lives out in California. So, I think this evening, we're just here to discuss the acquisition, is that correct?
Acquisition, appropriation of money, we'll get to that.
Appropriations, okay.
We've got authorization, legislation in place beginning Monday if we can, if not, because of what's required according to the Law Director, at least proceeding with a acquire and going through that. And it's my understanding, somebody was going to be stateside here in August, one of the families?
That is correct, yes. The gentleman, the member of the Dowler family, his name's Bill Deam, actually, William Deam, he's the, he has a mortgage on the property that he took out alone to help his mother before she passed away, to help her as she was aging. He actually lives in Paris, and so I've been working with his uncle in California to try to arrange all the information for this project. Mr. Deam, he has told me that he expects to be within the U.S. in late July and early August. And so, ideally, to make a real estate closing easy and for the title agents or a title attorney, it's preferable that the person be in the United States. They don't need to be in Athens. We can arrange for closings at a local title office anywhere in the U.S. But if they're outside the U.S., we need to actually send documents to a foreign, a U.S. Embassy or a U.S. Consulate. And so, depending on where they are, there could be considerable travel, as well as just complications to get that on their radar. So, we're trying to coordinate this while Mr. Deam is in the U.S. And his family, his daughter lives in Michigan, upper, the Upper Peninsula. She's also on the deal, so we'd be coordinating with her to arrange for her to sign paperwork in the Upper Peninsula.
Paul, thank you. You've done a lot of hard work on this. I appreciate all the history...
My pleasure.
...and kind of bringing it all together for everybody tonight. Does anyone else on council have questions?
It's a beautiful piece of land, if you haven't seen it. It is gorgeous. Yes.
Chris?
Just a comment, yes. I think it would be a wonderful addition to the south side and the green space, and if we can work towards conservation easements, that would be great, so we could have access on the trails. I know Sales Park is used heavily, so to have something similar to this on the south side. And I know Rotary has spent a lot of time in Camp Rotan in the last year, year and a half, making improvements there, and it's used very regularly. One point of clarification, or a request for clarification, I thought we need, we need an ordinance for authorization to purchase, and we're talking $25,000 from the city, $15,000 from the family that's donating, but we want $5,000 potentially for legal...
Oh, that's correct. I did ask for $5,000 in addition. So, the appropriations, after discussion with the auditor, was to appropriate the entire property purchase, and then when the tax donations, when the donation money comes in, she'll then feed it back to the correct account.
And will we, am I, question to the auditor then is, our discussion earlier had said we would transfer the money within the 580 account. If that's the case, do we need an appropriation?
Right. And, no.
Okay.
Just for the appropriations.
So, the ordinance...
There's money appropriated in the cap fund, 580. 580 is in a different account line, so we would transfer the money needed...
To the land purchase account line, but that is not council action needed for that, so...
So, the council action is the authorization for purchase? Okay.
Authorization, authorization, yes.
And did I do the math right? Are we talking $45,000 with the additional five, or are we at 40?
That's correct.
So, $45,000. Okay.
Let me just jump in here and remind all committee members, committee chairs particularly, that we, it's obvious that Debbie Walker, our clerk, is out today. She's not feeling well, and she hopes to be back tomorrow, but she's going to the doctor, so when she does, she's going to take notes from the video, but if you would just make notes of any ordinances that you're going to need to come up for Monday, that would help.
So, essentially, it's authorization to purchase and acquire the property, spending in the $45,000, 580.
Oh, no, it is right.
What's matter?
We were discussing, we may actually come within appropriation ordinance... Right. To take it out of the unappropriated recreational funds and put it to the cap fund in recreation, because the other property that we'll be discussing is the one that we were going to take from the general fund.
So, you would advise Debbie Walker, Clerk of Council, by this week?
270, TC 500, appropriate money for that.
And this would be...
We have an unappropriate balance at this point, 270 as of June 11th, $290,000 in recreation.
And this would be the whole $45,000 dollars returned.
And then when the donations come back in, they'll be applied appropriately. I just continue to say that they are time-sensitive, and we're going to be, you know, as we get to this June, July, so...
Do we have any more questions for Mr. Loeb?
Just, I would just like to mention that, thank you, I'm kind of abusing you as a planner to have you do all this work, but it's part of...
My pleasure.
Okay.
No problem at all.
I just have a comment. Again, I also think that this is a beautiful parcel of land. You know, we look at the Gowandi property, which is five acres, along with this particular property, which is 15, and then aside from any connector that we can work through, with Camp Rotan, I believe that's, is that 15 acres as well?
Camp Rotan's more than that, I believe.
More than that.
It's about 20.
So, we're talking close to 45 to 50 acres of conservation space.
And there's no doubt that if we can make that trail network happen, which is the goal, there's no doubt that Sales Park adds significant value to the real estate that's in that location. It is heavily used by those residents. Any house that goes for sale in that neighborhood, almost one of the first things the advertisement says is footsteps from Sales Park, and everybody knows that, you know, they want to be near an amenity like that. So, there's a real opportunity here for southsiders to really make something special, and I would imagine, just like Sales Park, mostly, most of the users would be residents in that area.
Yeah, Camp Rotan, as a member nicely was saying, has had major improvements in this past year alone, which is a big plus as well. It's a great space.
As, I believe, they just redesigned their, remodeled their cabin.
They did. It's a great space.
So, I would just add, as we proceed with this appropriating the funds and hopefully everything falling into place, is that as you plan for parking for access into those points, I'm thinking Far Hills, Cardiff, Camp Rotan already exists, but that we keep that in our planning mind, too, in terms of, you know, how that's done. Because I know early on in Sales Park, there were some issues with the parking and access points and all that kind of thing.
The location on, it's actually fronts on a street called Avaline, which was never developed. Avaline was actually a Dowler, it's named after Avaline Dowler. So, there's a right-of-way that the city already has that it fronts on, which is essentially a dead-end street. So, there's, we already have that much space, and if you think about the width of our right-of-way, you can easily fit roughly four or five cars wide if they're just parking lanes, which is about the amount of space. I think Sales Park has, I was just up there today, six or seven parking spaces, if people park like they're supposed to. If they don't park like they're supposed to, there is anywhere from two to four, so...
Thanks. Yes.
Great. I just want to get my head straight about how the donations come back and when. We put $40,000 up, I assume a closing, checks are cut, money's distributed. When is, when is the donation coming back? The same day? How's that work?
Well, you know, we're working with the property owners to determine the best methodology, but they have indeed in writing stated that this is what they want to do.
Well, you know, I just want to see what would happen if they defaulted. I mean, I mean, thanks for the check, I got it, adios and back to Paris. Not that I'm saying that it happened, but on the other hand, we have to make sure that it doesn't.
There's a few ways I can think of that that can be arranged, one of which is that its requirements of $15,000 be brought to the table, and then it be held in escrow by the title attorney or the title agents. They are authorized, they will not release or clear title on a real estate transaction until all of any of those stipulations are met.
Right.
The escrow attorney or the escrow agent is then legally authorized and required and bound by law to wire that money to the other party, and so that's, that's just how any real estate transaction would occur. So, that's probably what we would want to build in here.
Right.
The other option, if the family members are saying that's not how they wanted to proceed, I think there's probably a legal issue we'd have to work out, or at least have contracts or something signed, sworn, notaried statements from them, saying that they're bound by that, giving the city the opportunity to pursue those funds if they should fall negligent and blink one on it.
Paul, am I correct that out of the three family members, it's really only the two who live in the United States who are making the donations?
That's correct. Two brothers, yeah.
And then they, they want, you know, something in writing from us, so they can use that when they file their taxes.
That is correct, right. There's Tom...
Dan, another in Paris, is not, you know, concerned about that.
He's just selling, right. He's just, he's just a seller. He actually owes $50,000, I believe, is the mortgage on there. He's going to just, he's going to pay $10,000 out of his own pocket at closing to bring the sale price down to 40. Maybe I'm incorrect, maybe the mortgage is just at $40,000. The two brothers, there's Tom and Jim. Jim lives in Los Angeles area, and Tom lives in the Phoenix area. They're both elderly. I believe Jim is, or Tom's in his mid-80s or early, early 80s, and Jim is in his mid-70s or both retired. They're both, they're all graduates of Athens High School. From all my conversations, including walking the property with several members of the Dowler family, I've heard nothing but that they have every intention of going through with this process, just the way they've said, but...
Right, I understand that, I just...
But you're right, we definitely, those issues need to be addressed, that's real money.
Completely agree. Good intentions are great, but I'd rather have a contract.
Completely agree, right.
Thank you. Jess?
I just wanted to comment briefly and perhaps ask the planner to comment on this acquisition along with the Recreation Comprehensive Plan draft process. I know that the Rec Advisory Board yourself and the rest of the executive branch have been working on those goals and that plan. Would you then say, or comment, this falls into part of that bigger picture and part of that?
It does. In fact, when we, when we were going through the public process for that Arts Parks and Rec Master Plan, public meeting with about 40 or 50 people present, we did surveys where between a mail survey and an online survey, we had over 200 comments come back, or 200 people completed. We did stakeholder interviews, I think several members of council, if not all members of council at that time, were interviewed, as well as board and commission members. One of the issues that rose to the top was that the people who gave us information for that plan hold the acquisition and the availability of green space within our community as one of the most important assets. And that's, I think, probably everybody in this room is, nobody's surprised by that statement.
Right.
It is one of the things that makes Athens such a great place, is that easy access to green space. And so, in this situation, we're actually private green space that nobody has access to legally except for the property owners. We're able to create something which is now a public green space, so we're meeting some of those goals and trying to fulfill the wishes of the public, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we could only meet those goals when community members feel as strongly as they do about the community and want to donate or give it a lesser cost or whatever, so later on down the line, we'll have to talk with the Dowlers about the name of the park.
They would like it to be named after their parents. They do have a name they've suggested for us already.
Okay, that's good to hear. All right, any other questions? Good, thank you. Yes. Okay, so... Okay, so we're going to go back to item one, which is the Environment and Sustainability Commission, and I'd like to introduce, if you'd like to come up, Cliff Hamilton, he's Chair of this commission. Again, this was a group that was appointed by council earlier this year, and Cliff's going to bring us up to date on what the commission's been doing and, and all those kind of things.
Is there a way for me to change slides?
I can handle it for you.
I think Paul's going to help.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, you have an assistant tonight.
All right.
I'll have my assistant.
Yeah. Thank you, Cliff.
All right, thank you very much. Go ahead. So, we, about June of last year, council established an Environmental and Sustainability Commission, and we started meeting, I believe it was November, and here's who we are. I think everybody knows Ed Newman. Liz Rhodes is a former grad student at OU. I think she works at the Village Bakery. Markie Miller is a current graduate student, and Lori Burchette is the Athens County Planner. And Paul and Chris are ex-officio members of the committee. So, we normally meet on the first Wednesday of the month in the conference room downstairs, and we spent the last seven or eight months fleshing out what we think sustainability means, how it applies to Athens, what, what we think are goal, our short-term and long-term goals. Go ahead, Paul. What we think are short-term and long-term goals. One of the things that we came up with is, what do we see as sustainability? What does it mean to us? And there's a statement that we came up with that, I think exemplifies what, what we're looking at. So, "The city of Athens is committed to the environmental, social, and economic health of the community. This commitment to sustainability acknowledges the needs of the present without compromising the needs or opportunities of future generations." And one of the reasons I'm here tonight is to start a discussion with you about what we can do to help you, what are your concerns, what kind of expertise and advice can we lend to you in, in plotting a future for the city? And here's what, here's issues that we, as a group, think we should be looking at or working on, or as a city that we should be concerned about, and primarily education of citizens, public, water quality issues, solid waste management issues, and transportation What we're looking at, what we're working on right now, short-term and long-term goals, a website that we would like to be a repository for information and a resource for the people of Athens. There's a letter that I believe Paul has distributed expressing our support for recycling in Athens. The Solid Waste Authority is in the throes of addressing recycling issues, and we have some opinions on that. Thank you. And then, long-term, we plan to start working on a sustainability plan for the city and a climate action plan.
Thank you.
And so...
Thank you. Council, any questions for Mr. Hamilton?
Yes?
Well, number one, thanks for coming tonight. Thanks for all the meetings you've been having. And it's, it's very encouraging to see that, you know, you've got four issues, transportation being near and dear to several of the council members' hearts, and not, you know, eight or nine different issues that you're going to be approaching. And I'm wondering, too, we also have some resources in the community with the Ohio University Sustainability Office, and if there will be ways for your group to interact with that sustainability office, so that we can, you know, with that larger group...
Athens is a great place for that.
Okay.
It's a wonderful place to live, and the, the people that are here, whether it's the university or members of the community, that we have a tremendous amount of resources here. And the OU Sustainability Office is, I work with them quite regularly, and I'm the university's environmental compliance engineer. And, yeah, I have a lot of dealings with them, and they're great to work with.
Great.
I have a question. I'm, I'm happy to see the work that your committee has been doing, and the primary concern I have is that I'd like to see a lot more people involved in, in these discussions, so I would, I would ask, how can we get more people involved and working on these issues? Because there are so many issues under these bullet points that you've brought up, like, you know, moving forward on recycling. We used to lead the way in the state as far as recycling, and we've fallen so far behind, we can't recycle many plastics here, so many other areas. I've taken a look at a sustainability plan from another comparable city in another state, and I think that, you know, there are a lot of things that we can look at from other places, such as organizing bike pools and, and walking buses to school, things like that, that would fit well with some of the work that you're already doing. So, I'd, I'd like to see, see the group working, maybe with the neighborhood associations, and see how we can pull in more, more voices to, to help us make progress in this area.
I agree with you. And that's an issue that a lot... And that's an issue that a lot of volunteer organizations face. How do you get more people involved? How do you bring in new blood, new ideas? And for this particular topic in Athens, it's been relatively easy for us to bring people in. There's a lot of people that are passionate about the environment, and how do we, how do we set up our community for the good of everyone? And yes, we're trying. I don't have specific, concrete direction and steps right now. If you like, we can talk about that again another time.
Well, and I would say that I think anybody can come to your meetings, right?
Yes.
So any of us on, well, council or whatever, but.
That's right, and the meetings are open to the public.
Right, right.
What time? I see first Wednesday of the month.
First Wednesday of the month at 5:15.
Five fifteen.
I didn't see that.
And where are you meeting?
In the conference room downstairs.
Okay, first floor conference room, 5:15. All right, so hopefully tonight we'll get some good press coverage as well.
I hope so.
Because I think things being written up in the newspaper does help get the word out.
One other quick question, and this has to do with your third, what you're working on, the long-term issues for Climate Action Plan and Sustainability Plan. The city in the past, I think, has been, become a partner with the Cool Cities Venture, and also with Earth Hour this past year. And I know we had some interest in working towards maybe a certification for the city on Earth Hour. So maybe your group is somebody who can help advise us, is this worth it? Is this the best way we can go for the resources and the people that we have to be involved with it? That might be a way to garner other people from the neighborhood associations if they, you know, want to become involved with something that your group might recommend.
All right, I'll look into that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ken.
Thank you again for your presentation and discussion and involvement with this commission. I'm also curious regarding how maybe hands-on the group is in communicating or reaching out to our local businesses such as the bars. There's obviously a large amount of glass and cans that go through those entities. I'm curious what the effort is to reach out, to connect with them, to begin a more involved recycling plan with them.
We see that as one of the first things that we should do as a community, yes. The state of commercial and multifamily recycling is, seems to be low-hanging fruit, if you will. It ought to be something we could address quickly and easily. And yeah, we've already started on that.
Super, tremendous.
That's an excellent point. I just had a conversation with some constituent business owners downtown last week about how there's like zero recycling from several businesses and how to get that going. And they even, there was a good suggestion about somebody starting up a small business that wanted to go out at 2:00 a.m., but if businesses knew that there was going to be somebody there with a truck at 2:00 a.m. who would collect their recycling, and then they could take it on to wherever, and they would get a fee for picking up that recycling. I mean, it sounds like a new business to me.
It does.
Small business, but, you know, because it's hard for people who do recycle at their businesses to see the volumes that go into the dumpsters who aren't recycling.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Ed Newman is extremely passionate about that.
He's extremely passionate, yes. That would be correct.
Yes, I.
I too want to thank you for the report. I'm kind of struck by your very first item on here, which is education, which is always a hard one, trying to educate everybody. And since these are open meetings, has the thought ever been kicked around of possibly holding the meetings up here and having them taped? Not necessarily having to have, show them live, but if you were to have them taped where you could actually archive and someone could go back through and look to see what was being discussed, where some of the issues. It's, that is, I think, a largely effective education tool, at least one of many tools that could be used, where individuals can call things back up and view them later.
I think that's a good point, because we on council are acutely aware of that. We may not see people in the audience, but they are watching us.
Okay.
And they bring up comments regarding what they saw, you know.
Okay. I'll bring that to the group and see what they say.
I would just say, I think whenever a new group gets started, and you guys are fairly new, you know, you're young, is to have that project or that thing you can sink your teeth into, and it sounds like you're kind of looking for that. You've got your goals together, you've got your mission, and you're working on that. But that one project that, that people could say, wow, they did that, we really need to kind of figure out, I guess it's all of our, everyone's responsibility to try to help you with that.
Yes, you're absolutely right.
Any other comments?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next on our list tonight is the franchise agreement for Ohio Power Company. And I'm hoping Paula or administration folks can help us a little bit on that.
Well, we continue to have extensions after extension, and I'm here tonight to say, guess what? We're going to have another modified amended extension. We've reached agreement on a number of items, which is primarily related to notification when working. We all understand when there's an emergency, but if they have planned maintenance and where we know they're going to go in, we need to know so that we can then inform the general public. Some of these also result in road closures and what have you. So that would follow for excavation, pole placement repair, tree trimming and removal, which we've already received for this year in advance, line repair and maintenance, and then the planned and unplanned outages. We also are, we had already placed in there that, a tree banking, if they, instances where they remove it, like they did on Columbus Road. They, in this case, they donated back in terms of dollars. We have over $3,000 worth of trees to go buy to replace and have those banked. Mr. Buck informed me that the previous agreement that we've been under prior to the extension where we got the ANSI, the Correct Pruning Methodology in there, and the notification to homeowners and what have you, that that was deemed just an extension. They need to go through the full public hearing process and have it published in the paper in the sixty-day comment period for a actual agreement. So what I'm here today is to provide you this information and then ask that we can start through an extension through the end of the year, unless somebody has additional items they want to add on, so that allows that process to take place, that these become included in the franchise agreement.
So were those the only items, the ones you listed, or were there others in there? And specifically, I know that when I sat in on the meeting with the AEP reps, one of the things that came up was pole treatments in terms of, in particular, our wellhead protection area, not having new poles being put in place, which are drenched or soaked in creosote, and then all of a sudden we've got something that doesn't fit with the MSDS being put into the ground.
He indicates, Mr. Buck does, that he's actually sending a letter stating that they agreed to provide, pertaining to not applying additional internal or external treatments to their poles in the watershed area. And I should get it this week. This came in today, so.
Thank you.
I guess, I guess I might just add that the challenges with tree trimmings, and many of us on council and people living in the communities have received complaints in the past about tree trimmings, it's very disempowering when this entity shows up and starts cutting, and you're left with the result, which may not be favorable. So I'm just hoping that we have teeth in it from a city's perspective to really address that end of it as well.
Well, it's written in the agreement. You mentioned last time, Ever Nicely, about having a tree left. He's already contacted his tree forester and waiting to hear back from that, why that occurred. But sometimes those things, you know, do happen as it were. And we need to separate emergency versus non-emergency if it's real tree trimming versus, you know.
Correct, right, like last summer.
Ratio.
Right, understandable.
And I really would like to back that up as well, because people go to work in the morning, and if they haven't received a letter, don't have anybody to watch, they come home, and it's a whole different situation.
Well, another thing they've asked is, is we tried to do an annual, a large community meeting about their tree trimming and their practices, and we got about six to eight people, a couple of them that weren't even in the city, they were from that county. So what they're suggesting is that they couldn't get on a shade tree agenda, and then that way they would present to the Shade Tree Commission, and then again, it would go, be run on the airwaves, and so.
Right.
More, more public outreach.
So is that what you're saying, too, with the, or is that in addition to the public hearing, or that would be part of?
The new agreement.
I don't know if it'd be part of the public hearing. It's just something that we've asked them to do on an annual basis, is to get the, communicate with the residents about their practices, so.
In theory, the practice is that they're supposed to inform the property owner. They're supposed to leave a tag on the door. They're supposed to contact that person. What I've found, from my anecdotal experience, is that most of the time when they say they're going to trim a tree, it means something different to them than the property owner. The property owner thinks it's just going to be like a little of a haircut or something like that.
Right.
Whereas, you know, they'll sit there and take off, you know, a good quarter of the tree, and now it's like, what did you do? So it's, again, it's part of the communication that's there, and it's always a difficult one. You've got professionals doing that, and the property owner has a different idea.
And again, some trees can handle that, and they'll bush back up the next year, and there won't be an issue, where you hope that the people who are doing the trees understand the differences between trees, and that some will do that and some won't.
Well, they've had, I've had conversations with them where, you know, the degree of how they trim depends on the type of tree. Some are notorious for dropping branches pretty far, and other ones aren't. Other ones do not bounce back, as you say.
Right.
You know, so they do have, they know what they're doing in that level. The question is how to communicate with the property owner and say, this is what's going to happen, you know? And that's it, because at the end of the day, sometimes the property owner says, well, if you're going to do that to that tree, you may as well have taken it entirely. There are, again, there are incidences, I know over the past five, six years, where we've had issues where they've gone to prune some tree that doesn't need it, you know, a fruit tree under a power line or something like that. But again, they're trying to keep the power going, and you can appreciate that, I think, most of the time.
Right.
You said the end of the year, fiscal year or calendar year?
I was throwing out calendar year, meaning we have to have an.
Seven months from now?
Pardon me?
This is June.
Yes, but due to the recess, due to the fact that this extension expires July 31st, in order to allow them to start through the process of the formal public hearing, I figured that could start in, they could technically start it in August, but my experience with this document, with this agreement is to allow additional time.
So we'll just ask for the extension.
With this language included, and I'll get that to you, so. Okay. All right, any other questions on that?
I guess, I would just, lastly, I would just add that, since many of us aren't present in the negotiating process, we're putting faith in you to really echo and acknowledge what it is that we're receiving from people in the community regarding trees. And I know you're not the ones up in the tree trimmers cutting the trees, I understand that, but it's an issue.
And not only that, they contract that work. So it's a matter of them relaying that information to their contractors. So we already have ANSI standards pruning language in there from the previous extensions.
So again, it's kind of like we just passed this ordinance last week about mitigation and, you know, when someone comes into our community, we have expectations. So I don't know if they get handed, the contractor gets handed a pamphlet that says, here's how we like our trees trimmed, you know what I mean? I don't know if it, because we're relying on AEP to tell the contractor.
Right, right.
And the Shade Tree Commission was actively involved in the previous ordinance in order to have that language included, so.
Yeah, that was a huge movement forward when that happened.
And we're rolling this over a shorter period of time. I mean, the original contract, we inherited from eighty-six, nineteen eighty-six.
Right.
We're going to keep it a short term, and I think we're talking three to five max. So we can review it.
And I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Revocable license for the existing fence at thirty-nine Hooper. This is a normal kind of process that we have to go through. Next week, I believe that we can have this in ordinance language. It's the ownership at thirty-nine Hooper Street, it's transfer of ownership. There's a fence there that, I believe, is it in the right-of-way?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, and so we just need to approve that once again. I'm not sure if anybody here on council, has anybody heard any concerns about that? We've not heard from the new owners. So this is kind of a standard.
Has the new owner requested an extension?
Yes.
They have, so we have heard from the new owners.
We have the packet, we have all that information, yes. And it's, it has to happen every time there's an ownership issue. It has to happen for, for the city, for insurance, for whatever.
It's the right-of-way, basically, it's not transferable, so this is a new owner has to re-up it.
Can I ask, what's the administration's point of view on this? Fences?
Existing fence.
Grandfathered in, are you pro or con?
The fact that it's existing.
Okay.
So it had received a revocable license from this body in the past, that property. So simply because the property owners changed, I don't know why that would be an issue.
And I don't, there's no need for new repair or changes, or the road hasn't changed, or anything like that that would necessitate a change in the, where the fence.
To my knowledge, no, but I haven't looked at it to tell you the truth.
This is in your ward, Hooper Street. Have you seen it?
No, I haven't.
No, I have three readings to find out.
Right.
Okay.
And once approved, this becomes a ten-year renewal process for that owner, as long as the same owner.
And if I really have a problem, I can veto it.
Okay. Any more questions on that? All right, another revocable license. This has to do with Horizon relocating the utilities underground at the wastewater treatment plant. So with the construction that's going on down there, now I don't know if I have any information on that. Yes, I do. I do have. So they've submitted their packet, and again, it's the same issue in terms of it's a revocable license, and they're just moving the, they have to move the facilities. Now that's, is that the whole big tower? No, where the flag is?
No, there's a connection between the power plant and where that hookup is. And the way I understand it, with the discussion with Andy Stone, is that because the level of the power that's being transferred across, they just want to make sure everything's done properly in terms of the, you know, dot the i's, cross the t's, and therefore that's why they're asking for it.
Right.
Am I correct in that? Or?
Well, it's related to AEP, the relocation, did you say that?
Yes.
Okay, so.
So it all goes together, and we've discussed that.
And AEP didn't want them on the new line, so this is allowing them the revocable license for where they are, or where they have to relocate to.
So, and it all has to do with the wastewater treatment plant. So I think, and the way I'm reading the letter, they need this done fairly quickly. Or somebody needs it done.
We do. Anything that stands in the way of that wastewater treatment plant.
So next week, when that comes up for, we'll do the ordinance, read it for the first time, we should probably suspend it.
That'd be great.
Or an emergency clause, both could help.
Okay, any questions?
Do we need extra people?
Horizon, AEP.
No, it's Horizon. I think that Debbie should have all the information here.
Why is AEP?
Yeah.
Booting them off the pole, because they don't, because, again, related to the new service pole that they put in for our wastewater treatment plant project, tune up $45,000.
Okay.
Horizon is their cost, it's at their cost to get this in place. And again, there's a number of facilities in the city that utilize that service, and so.
It's like splitting a circuitry on your house when you have too many, you know, things going in one flood.
And it appears that all the department heads on the review are favorable.
Okay. So one other miscellaneous item, just want to say that Jeff and I have begun the process of the AHCOT co-committee meeting. We've had one meeting, and everyone showed up, and we had some lively discussion and a lot of ideas, well, not necessarily ideas, but issues discussed. And so we are meeting again tomorrow.
A lot of issues.
A lot of issues. A lot of issues, okay, that's all, anyone else have?
Any other miscellaneous?
Did either of you want to announce the award for small city?
I could go ahead, I don't have all the paperwork in front of me, but we did receive notice today that we did receive the small cities grant to, to continue working towards the improvements on Richland Avenue, so I know we were all excited to receive that.
So it's about, the total project cost we estimate at this point, I think is about three point nine million, so.
Might as well say four.
Four. And this puts them, it's, over, is it a million dollars closer to achieving that goal? We have another grant application that is pending, so we should hear soon for the, for the funding for the project to get things in order, so really appreciate the work because every one of those grant applications takes a lot of time.
And how, how big was the small cities grant?
One point nine, actually this is the final money that we're waiting on.
Oh, this is the final amount, okay.
So it is about a million dollars in local funds, but we've already, we're like under design paying for that this year, I mean, there's going to be greater discussion in terms of the funding and with the auditor's office and everything, but this is the last piece that we needed in order to be able to plan to proceed to go forward, so.
Fantastic, so does this give us the three point nine million, is what you're saying?
It has a total of two point nine mil in outside funds and then.
Right, and then, okay.
Yeah, maybe we are waiting on the last one.
I think we are awaiting one, one other, one additional grant notification.
Maybe, because that's three out of four, so that's where I'm saying, if we have a one million dollar loan, this was the one we knew was coming but couldn't announce until we actually officially received the one point nine million dollars.
This is just another example, again, as to how well the city has done when it comes to going after grant dollars to improve projects and, and in particular, this project, the south side, or the South Richland Avenue corridor is one that, is one of the gateways to the city and it's one that certainly needs improvements, I think it'll, I'm hoping that that will, if this goes through and everything is planned, that it bolsters economic development up and down through that whole corridor, so again, it's much needed, so thank you.
And I think that's, to add on that, Steve, it's important because it's not just paving or making the sidewalks look nice, we're talking about infrastructure, storm sewer because we know that's an area that floods frequently, so this was a major project to do the design and engineering and figure out how to make a major impact there with not just a smooth street, but, but really look at the flooding issues and, which continue to degrade the road, it's, it all goes together.
And safety, safety is huge up and down through that corridor.
Definitely.
You know, as it stands right now, it's, it's a serious concern for a lot of individuals who decide to ride their bicycles and there's a lot of students who live up in that area, there's a lot of individuals.
A lot of traffic.
A lot of foot traffic, a lot of bike traffic and a lot of car traffic, so this is great, good news.
And I know the engineering took all that into account, you're, you're dealing with not just, you know, you're dealing with pedestrians and, and bicycles and, and cars.
And a multitude of curbs, which is.
And a multitude of curbs.
Therefore, wheelchairs, a lot of individuals who are in need of having access up and down that corridor.
Okay.
Good deal.
I think we're done.
Thank you for, um.
Good night.
No, not quite, planning and development committee, now we're going to move on to finance and personnel, number nine.
And we'll try and make the topics as interesting as we can, we have seven items tonight and we of course have the administration, the auditor's office, the mayor's office to help us with explanations on these. The first one is the wastewater treatment plant and you may remember that this came up briefly in discussion last week at council meeting because the ordinance that we originally appropriated for the amount of the project was nineteen point one million dollars. The loan amount was approved for eighteen point five seven seven and so that left not a discrepancy but a difference in the amount of what had been appropriated versus what had been loaned to us of five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Auditor Hecht has checked with the auditors and they have recommended that at this point we reduce the appropriation so that it matches the amount of the loan and then we will, if need be later on in the project, it's, it is a huge project and so we'll have, the auditor's office as well as the engineer's office are tracking the changes that will be occurring, so sometimes there are changes from change order and in this particular case, the, the change in the amount. As I understand, the amount, the difference between the loan amount, which was our question last week, and the, the appropriation amount is the, as was thought, is the amount of the capitalized interest and that's the amount of interest between now and the first loan payment that we make on February one, two thousand sixteen, and so that's the reason for the difference between the two of them.
Twenty years, I think.
Any questions?
Twenty.
Okay.
Okay, so that just needs to be, you're amending what, zero sixty-three thirteen, is that it?
Yes.
I think that's the ordinance that's required to be amended.
Yes, rebelling.
So, just for Debbie's, Deborah's point of view there.
Right.
So that would be the reduction there.
Okay. Second item is the Northwest Bike Spur and this is the Hope property purchase and if all things are, it seems like moving along with the negotiations on this, we'll have two ordinances that will need to come forward, one for the authorization, one for the appropriation for the purchase of the land. And if I have the amounts right, Auditor Hecht, I know, I think I transposed them one week, but I believe that it's ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars that goes to the street fund for the actual improvements and then the one hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred dollars will be to the five eighty account, the capital improvements for the conservation grant for the riparian area. In addition to that, as we met with the auditor to review the finances on this, we realized that we will need to transfer fifty thousand dollars from the general fund and transfer this to the capital improvements fund for the actual cash, so we have it there in the capital improvements fund and we will reimburse that then when the grant funds are received.
Does that cover it? I think so.
The third item has to do with IT needs and you may remember that we had an assessment, our IT assessment report from Tom Reed earlier this year and some recommendations made from that and we have also had a change in the staffing in the IT office and so we were, as I understand from the Service Safety Director, Paula Heran Mosley, we will need to transfer some monies in, within the eight sixty-five account, which is the internal services account and just, so as we develop the long-term plan for where we're moving forward with the IT, we'll have some monies available to do that. Do we have any additional information?
I don't have a dollar amount, we're having a meeting again tomorrow and then we'll be working with the auditor to determine what needs to be transferred, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I just have a question and maybe a little bit out of the realm here, but we really, in terms of IT and when Mr. Reed gave us his report and all that, now we don't have an employee or employees in IT and we're using an outside source to monitor our IT services.
We're contracting with a high university and this is in the interim as we determine how we're going to proceed and go forward. We, through our internal discussions, we all see the need for the technician, you know, the person that comes in and something's wrong with my computer or my printer or my telephone and what have you, but it's how we really.
Organize all of that.
And essentially, I feel like I already have authorization from council because we have those listed in the staffing ordinance, but whether or not we wind up with a chief information officer or an instrument technician or some modification of those duties, it's still, we're still working on that.
Part of it has to do with what kind of services could be provided by a high university and what they can and can't do and how much we want to rely on their expertise in terms of a system overview. Again, what we, we recognized with the consultant was that we would need at least two IT people to question, is it a CIO or just two technicians or one technician or one in between, so that's trying to fit it out right now and we're trying to get it done as soon as possible.
And, and there seems to be some misconception out there when, when we say we're contacting the high university, the high university has traditionally for, I don't know how many years, that's how our internet, it goes through a high university, it's something that they've provided to the city for many a year, so that's continuing.
Any questions or from council members, council member Reisner, you okay with that?
Do you have any idea how long the interim will last? I, I just feel a little uneasy being dependent upon OU for our IT needs.
I do too.
Right.
Again, discussion, meeting tomorrow, right?
Yes, we're meeting tomorrow and then we still have, we'll be meeting going forward, meeting with the human resource director and looking to see what we're going to do.
We're, we're trying to nail down what we do need, what the job descriptions will be and what kind of services overlap.
And I hear you saying that again, but again, a high university has carried our world wide web access for years.
I understand that.
This is a little bit different in terms of the services they're providing.
I feel uneasy about that too.
We investigated that a while back too, again, we could always buy our own bandwidth.
Yeah, it costs money.
It could be pricey or not, depending on how you go about it.
Do you know who we buy from? A high university.
They'd be the cheapest, actually, they've given us prices on that and they're the best way to go.
Right.
So in, in theory, what we'd like to do is eventually is if, when the time comes, depending on what it looks like, we'd be transferring some from the TC one hundreds to the two hundred and three hundred for professional services, if that's to occur. Again, we have, we have the dollars allocated for the salary for the present, the past tense CIO, so we might have to do that. We don't need to do it immediately, but we will do, need to do it soon and that's why we bring it up to your attention.
So we may have some numbers by the end of this week then for the detail on it for appropriation ordinance then, okay, thank you. Next item is debt policy and I'm only bringing this up as a very brief review tonight because council member Pappy asked as we began to enter into some long-term debt for the wastewater treatment plant improvements and so it does raise our mind, you know, so what's our, the city's policy on how much cash reserve we keep in hand, how much we can go into debt and I thought these were good questions. So one of the items is the debt policy document that I believe deputy auditor Laura Kreider gave to you earlier in the week and just to review very briefly on that, that we have direct debt limits and they are set at a certain percent of the assessed valuation of the assets of the city. So for the voted and unvoted direct debt limit, we could go to approximately ten percent, ten, ten and a half percent of our assessed valuation and our assessed valuation for the city is currently, if I have this right, three hundred and thirty-four million dollars. So then for the unvoted direct debt limit, we're set at five and a half percent, so in broad brushstrokes, if we have three hundred and thirty-four million dollars worth of assets, we can encumber ten percent worth of voted and unvoted debt, that would be approximately thirty-four million dollars that we could go into debt. So what I'd like to do is that we also distributed to you tonight then the two thousand thirteen debt due payments or debt due dates and I think what's most relevant is if you look at the top right-hand corner of that and it says that our total city debt at this point is four point one million dollars. So remember we were talking about total assets of three hundred and thirty-four million, if it's set at ten percent, that would be thirty-four million, that would be our top limit, we're currently at four point one. And you might notice down on the left-hand side, auditor Hecht was clarifying for us, the second grouping are general obligation bonds, those technically are not included in what we, in our total debt, so if you took that out, we're even lower than the four point one million in debt right now. So I thought that was a valuable kind of, just, just checking, you know, from the big, big broad brushstrokes perspective, are we, are we in good shape with that kind of thing with the debt?
Well, the wastewater treatment plant loan is, is pretty big, but that still leaves us ten million to work with, so we're, we're within our, our limits usually. So it's a good question, there's a lot of debt to add on at one time.
Yeah, so thank you for the, for the query on that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, the other one was our fund balance and you might know that when we get our, when we get our monthly expense accounts that we review from the auditor's office, one of the accounts that we receive is the fund balance and that's basically, that's our cash in the bank. And last, in December two thousand eleven, at the, I believe at this date, auditor's suggestion, wasn't it, auditor Hecht, that we develop a, a policy statement on how much cash reserves that we keep in.
Actually, that would be considered best practice for anybody and always has been, but that came about when we refinanced our community center bond about three years ago and they recommended that we have policies in place and so working with the treasurer and, you know, our bond company, we, well, I gathered policies from all around, people on lift serve, you know, their finance officers and things like that and we put a policy in place and basically the idea is to keep money in there, which of course we talk about every year, at the end of the year especially with carryover, money that you need to make your first payroll and things like that and in our personal lives, you know better than to spend every penny we make, you know, and not put something back and that's what that's aimed at and so we did establish a cash reserve policy.
So we have a goal in that policy of seven and a half to fifteen percent of our annual operating expenses or thirty to sixty days of operating funds in cash. So we have, my last notes say that we have about eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per month in expenses. Last year at the end of the year, we had a million in carryover funds, but then we had some significant bills that we needed to pay off immediately in January that were just as auditor Hecht was saying, they were either previous expenses and then getting ready for payroll, so that immediately took that million dollars down by, it reduced it to seven hundred thousand dollars, so. But anyway, this is a good thing to, you know, for us to keep in mind as we review budgets and cash balances, you know, as we work towards, you know, the end of the fiscal year and seeing what kind of shape the city finances in and we thank you all, thank the administration, number one, for, you know, you have the departments that are managing and looking at their money and looking at their balances and you all are too and reviewing it and then also to auditor Hecht and deputy auditor Kreider for, you know, helping us review all this. If anybody has any, yes.
I want to say I appreciate it because having moved into my second year on council, the financial aspects of this can be pretty daunting and to, to hear that and almost every time you're here, Kathy, you're helping us understand and you're giving us more information and, you know, we hear from the state how we're getting less and less money, so of course everyone out in, in the community hears that too, so it's, it was, it's just really important and I know, I appreciate you guys putting those two questions that I had together because of, of course, people always taught about, talk about debt ratio, you hear that all the time and, and it was just important to kind of know from our point of view what we're doing and to feel a little.
I appreciate that and I appreciate council's interest, our finance bookkeeping system is not really easy to understand.
It isn't.
We're talking about a thirty million dollar budget for the city, limitations on lots of that money and it's not really all in one pot to use and things like that and, and actually the current administration has been really good in, in watching the budget and working with the department heads for spending and I think they've done a good job without, without hurting the services we provide and that's the most important thing right there.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to comment under, on the fact that, that we, through your office, maintain a very healthy financial picture and yet the administration makes sure that as, as a city, we're very active and proactive in, in terms of all of our residents, whether it be building roads or sidewalks or, or recreation areas, so it's, it's, it's a wonderful balance that they've worked out and as the chairman said this evening, Athens is a great place to be, really.
Councilmember Patterson?
You know, it kind of in layman's terms, something else too I think needs to be recognized is the city's, you know, our credit rating in the city is very high as well in these times.
It is, it really is and that's why we were able to save the city three hundred and fifty thousand dollars when we refinanced the community center in two thousand center in 2010, three years ago. We had at the time, six more years to pay down on that obligation. And yes, because of the credit rating, we were able to hang on to a lot of work, the mayor, treasurer, Deputy Auditor Ray Hazlett at the time, and myself, Nancy Vane, had a lot of meetings and, but we were able to save, save ourselves, you know, $350,000. And, you know, that's nothing to sneeze at, but we do have a good credit rating.
So, the, so the bond rating is at AA?
AA2.
2. So, if you ever get asked, that's just one of those things, that's good to know.
It's really good, especially for an entity our size.
Yep. Great, thank you. Next agenda item has to do with electronic payment. And what we have been talking about is we're hoping that we will be able to set up credit card payments for citizens to be able to pay their utility bills. And the tricky part on this is that once the funds come in, we need to have the correct kind of software so that we make sure that the money gets credited to the correct departments or accounts. But as I understand, we've had preliminary discussions with a software company that says they interface with the software that our Auditor's Office is using. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, we're ready to have a, a core meeting, is that right, Deputy Service Safety Director?
I don't know about how you, what we titled that meeting, but this, this company, Infatek, actually works with CMI. There is no setup fee to CMI customers. The fact that their CMI, you know, already has a relationship with, that's huge to the city because that's who runs our financial accounting software system. There will be a convenience fee, and that would be assigned to the customer. They can set it up so that there's a portal through our website, or of course, they can access it online anywhere. Another, part of that discussion did go into the debit card right there at the window. They are advising against that. They're saying this, how the credit card fees are being assigned or being reviewed at a federal level and expect some, some resolution here soon. So, they're advising that we maybe possibly delay that portion of this implementation. But we need a little bit more time. We need to make sure that the auditor and treasurer are comfortable with these decisions and that indeed the money gets posted correctly.
Well, thanks for all the research work on that. And just to remind folks, people who own in the city can make utility payments directly through their checking accounts now. That's not a feature that's available to renters right now who have to pay utilities. So, that's why adding this credit card payment feature, I think, would be very helpful. And once again, I think it's going to be one of those educational kinds of items where we let people know, it's often, you know, if you purchase things online, they say there's an access fee for it or an additional charge available, and we'll need to let people know that. But I, I think there are many, from the response I've heard from people, there'd be many people who'd be willing to pay that additional fee, knowing that they could do, charge it on their credit card.
Their estimate is a 245 to 399 fee, so it may depend upon how many actually sign up, how many users we get to. If you have more, that's going to reduce the burden for everyone, so that's...
Okay. Councilmember Reisner?
It seems like this would be a win situation for the type of community we have here. We have, I think we found out that 70% of the people that live here live in rentals and, oh, I don't know, what was it, 60 or 70% of the population is below the age of 25? I mean, that's the, that's the generation that does everything online. And the idea of paying cash or writing a check, I, I don't even think most of you even know how to write a check anymore. And this would just be a, a great way to actually get things paid on time, actually, or even just get paid, so.
And I'll put on my wish list if we could get passes for the Athens City Transit, too. I think we had discussed that, that I think that would be great, and I think we could increase ridership by adding that on as well. Okay. Mayor Wile, did you have anything?
I'd like to give thanks to the Deputy Service Safety Director, Ron Lucas, who's been doing a lot of this work. I will be the first to admit, I do not pay things online, so I'm kind of a Neanderthal and I write the checks. So, I'm glad he's, he's pushing it and doing most of the homework and explaining it to me.
Great.
And I, I think that's an important point, is that for people who already do banking online, you know, we already go through our banks and we just pay things and, you know, there's some companies you deal with directly, but that's most people. Are you used to doing a lot of that anymore, so?
We do. And the big thing is, we take withholding tax payments online and have for a while now, but, and we're all in favor of that in our office. But we do have to be careful, as Member Nicely mentioned, that we can't just have people dumping money into our bank account and not knowing which accounts to credit. And the money, as far as utilities goes, is divided among at least four funds, water sewer, garbage, stormwater, is that how many we have now? So, all that money has to be posted to the right place. So, that's what makes it a little more complicated than just, you know, sure, put money in our bank account, you know, that's great. But we do have to be able to post that to the correct accounts.
Well, thanks for all the work, and we'll hope to hear more positive updates on it in the future. The next item has to do with a medical insurance fund. And just by way of background, a little bit of information, the city of Athens is self-insured, so each year, we set aside so much money per employee per month. And we had discussed that earlier this year, that our previous rate had been $12,300 per employee per year, and that equates to $1,025 a month. And that former rate had been set by, or the rate had been set by former Mayor Rick Abel, so it had been some years since we had increased it. Earlier this year, we made the decision to increase it from the 12.3 per year to $15,000. And the auditor and deputy auditor have made some very careful reviews and calculations of the med pays that we have made so far this year. And we have, so far, if I'm understanding the math correctly, appropriated $2.311 million out of the various accounts within the city. But the appropriation needed for the, to do the med pays at this point is $2.6 million. So, we're short. And the analysis was done on which departments would need to make additional payments between now and the end of the year. So, we have an estimate from the Auditor's Office that the following departments would need to have $750 per person deducted, grand total 750 per person between now and the end of the year. And it would be, and I want to also say, this is not from the employees. This is from the departmental budget, so employees shouldn't be worried that they're having additional expenses withheld. But the departments involved would be streets, recreation, the community center, water department, and sewer department. And...
We have a breakdown of exactly how much for each department, and we're not talking huge amounts for any of them, 9,000, 3,000, 4,500. And actually, just to clarify, we've appropriated $2.6 million. However, that money is based on these transfers from other departments. We're not transferring enough money into that fund to, so that we won't have $2.6 million to spend that we've appropriated. So, we need to transfer a little bit more money and to make sure we can meet our bills by the end of the year. And as Member Nicely said, Deputy Auditor Laura Kreider did a lot of work and went back to 2007, tracking our expenditures year by year to see what kind of trends we might have. And of course, it's not an exact science, you know, it just depends on what kind of claims are made throughout the year. And so, we would rather make sure we have enough to cover at least what we think is going to be spent. And of any of the funds, talking about the cash reserve policy, this is the one that the auditors brought this up to us years ago, that we should have at least two to six months of cash reserve in, in that medical fund. So, this will hopefully keep us from scrambling at the end of the year and having to transfer a lot of money at the last minute like we did last year.
Yeah, and I was just going to mention exactly that, that last year, we had at the end of the year, a total carryover of $25,000. But then when we came into January, we had a $31,000 bill due. So, I, I really appreciate the work that you're doing now to say, let's make sure we appropriate additional monies from the departments to transfer over to that account so that we don't think that the money's necessarily there to spend for something else. Councilmember Reisner?
If by some fluke that there was a surplus at the end of the year, what would happen to the surplus?
Depending on how much it was.
Well, right.
If, if we were to return that to the different departments, it would be done on a percentage basis, based on how many employees are paying into it. Not everybody in the city has, is on our insurance plan and things like that.
I guess what I was getting at is that there might be an incentive for a department to keep the employees healthy if they knew that if they had fewer claims on their, on their share of the, of the payments, that there, that it may come back.
We absolutely could do that.
You see what I'm getting at?
Sure, I do.
Like, sort of a, a carrot at the end, like, guys, you know, if we all stay healthy and we don't do a lot of medical claims, that, you know, the department will get some money and we'll get that new, whatever it is that we need desperately that we couldn't get before.
For example, City Engineer Andy Stone does that with his division.
Yeah.
They actually ride their bikes and then they track their weight loss and what have you.
Right.
All employees automatically have a membership to the community center. It's, it's a little bit, again, you offer it, but they've got to take advantage of it, so.
That's good to know, those plans, those incentive plans are in place for the, for the employees.
And I think our Human Resources Director is, is also open to ideas and is investigating and looking into wellness and the benefits for...
Incentivizing wellness.
Correct.
You know, I'm, I'm all for the incentivizing wellness and everything, but, you know, I think people need to keep in mind that catastrophic things can happen that aren't necessarily because of your health behaviors. They can be for a number of different reasons.
Sure.
Sure. So, the scale can certainly tip in the other direction to where we're, where we're sitting out with a surplus, we can find ourselves even further behind the power curve when it comes to finances for the healthcare, so.
And again, it comes down to making the budget to end of the year.
That's right.
What we want to look at and how it works. I mean, if we have a, a high carryover, then it gets blended into other, you know, parts. Part of the reason why we're doing this also is that there's a, a little bit of disconnect when I was putting the budget together to TC-100s in terms of allocating that money from the medical insurance into the, you know, into the mix at that time. So, there's, you know, and again, it varies from year to year depending on needs. So, it's a, it's a little bit of a, you know, we try our best, that's it.
Right.
Well, it's good to have that retrospective, too. If you went back to 2007, that kind of gives you an idea, get some different numbers to look at.
And again, the insurance industry's going to change.
It is.
We've added domestic partners to the mix. You know, again, the, the aging of our workforce varies from year to year depending on what's going on. So, there, there are variables.
So, my only request then of the Auditor's Office, I know that we have discussed these amounts, but we need to make sure to get them to Clerk of Council Debbie Walker so that she's aware of it for the appropriations ordinance for next Monday night. The last item that I have is the Columbus Road project, and Councilmember Butler has talked to us about this before. This is construction, construction engineering for some major improvements to Columbus Road that are, and Lancaster Road that are taking place this summer. And we're now ready for that same assessment kind of process where we have four or five resolutions that move through council. The first one being the resolution of necessity so that we can begin on the assessment process for sidewalks that are reviewed and deemed necessary for repairs. And we will then shortly after that then need an appointment of an assessment equalization board. Once again, volunteers who help us in reviewing the cases where if a property owner disagrees with the amount of the, the assessment or maybe the linear footage, you know, then they can help resolve and offer recommendations on it. So, we'll move that resolution of necessity forward next Monday night.
I have one comment about that. There were some questions about Columbia Gas. Did that get worked out?
It has not in terms of them getting in there and getting their stuff because they come, they come late to the table. So, that's still to be determined. Our plans are finalized.
So, that's a concern. You don't want to go in there and start tearing up brand-new cement.
Right, they'll have to replace it, restore it, similar to what happened all over the east side. But we're, we're, we're under funding guidelines and restrictions in order to get our work done. And frankly, we are under what we all know is our season, you know? We want things, the majority of a lot of this work done before we have 20,000 people more in the, in the city.
And I totally understand that. I just, in my visual mind, I, I think, you know, driving down a brand-new sidewalks and then a year later, somebody comes in and makes all these cuts, which is what we'd be talking about because they didn't come to the table, even though they were asked many, many, many months beforehand.
I'm not saying that we won't work something out with them, but I'm saying that it's, it's pretty late to the table in terms of the design engineering is complete, so.
Okay. Any other miscellaneous items? Auditor Heck?
I do have one thing that came up today, and it has to do with our CCA collections. A second round of letters went out, which we had put a PSA out there saying the letters would go out between the 21st and 28th of June. And what has happened, and I made a couple of calls today, but they sent out about 1,400 letters. About 50 people got letters with the dates that seem wrong because, as you know, our first letters were asking for information from 2006 through 2010. And this round was to ask for information from 2011.
Good luck with mine.
What happened was they sent the letters out and asked for information from 2006 through 2011. So, people who complied, about 50 people complied out of 1,400 and provided their information through 2010. However, the issue that was on our federal returns that, you know, brought them to our attention last time around is probably still there. And so, we do need information for 2011, but I'm sure I know that there are a few people that are upset and, and they did comply, and they're right, the letters were not done correctly. And so, we're working on that. Anybody who wants to can call and tell us, and they, they've already, since I called, then they went in and, and checked their records. And, you know, someone wasn't paying attention to the notes in the files and let it go through as it stood. And they will send out letters of apology if we can give them names to anybody that, you know, got this and had complied. However, as I said, they need to take note that this is, includes 2011 now, and that they probably do need that information. Until they catch up with, as you know, quite a few people, once they did this and realized that they were going to continue to get this income that they didn't realize was taxable, came into our office and filed their 11 and 12 taxes. That's where we collected that extra $70,000 in-house. Not everyone did that. I don't know that I would have done that. And so, they are still kind of on the radar for needing to adjust their, their tax return according to this new information, so.
So, they could double-check with your office?
Yes.
If that's okay?
Yes.
And, okay. So, as I understand, the previous information was through 2010.
2010.
And so, some of the people might have already filed for 2011, but if in doubt, they should...
Well, they probably, I think the issue is they complied with it and provided CCA their information through 2010. But now, we're asking about, for information from 2011. So, we're not really asking them to redo, you know, the other five years. We just need, or CCA needs 2011 information now.
Okay.
So, if they need any clarification, they, they can call.
Okay.
You know, we'll help them through this. But just so they know, it's not that we, the, the information was lost and didn't make it to CCA if they brought it to us or anything like that. CCA has recognized that they did send letters to about 50 people who had complied and shouldn't have had that date span in their letter, so.
Great.
But, you know, I guess if you look at 1,400 letters...
Well, thanks for letting us know. It, it helps because then that way, if a citizen contacts one of us, then we're, we're apprised and we can tell them.
Right, no, and I feel bad, they feel bad.
That's what happened this morning, yeah.
But the big thing is, you know, I don't want them to think that their, that their records are, are probably corrected for those previous years. I don't want them worrying that we're still trying to collect money or, or anything like that, that the records are, are correct, that the letters are wrong.
So, all... So all 1,400 letters were incorrect?
No, 50 out of 1,400.
Just, well, how do we know it's 50 out of 1,400?
Because they, they ran a report after I called and then called me back, and, and they found 50 people. There were quite a few people who did not respond to the first letter.
Uh-huh.
I don't know that we made a big deal about that, but yeah, a lot of letters went out. And there would be new people in there too, that maybe didn't even live here until 2011 that would show up now. But yes, quite a few people didn't respond, so we still need all of theirs, but we've added a year on. So 50 out of 1,400 letters have the incorrect dates on there.
So just as a follow-up, for those people who are not responding, you're kind of giving them another chance. They may not even live here anymore, but the bottom line is you're, you're, there'll be another action sometime later on down the road?
Right. They should be getting an assessment letter, which I, yeah. They're just going to calculate what they think they owe us based on their federal returns. Now, there might be some adjustments that could be made if we have their information in front of us, or CCA does. But until they provide that information, they'll, they'll be assessed.
So CCA will make that determination?
They will.
They, they will come up with a number? If there's no other documentation or information that the-
Right. So instead of saying, please provide us your information so we know if you owe us money, we're going to say, this is what you owe us. And then they have to come back and show us that they don't, or we take other steps.
And those numbers will be generated off of the federal amounts, so, yeah.
So this is income they're reporting to the federal government, and that's what this is based on.
Well, I'm glad CCA's at least sending out an apology letter on those that were erroneous. Yeah.
It's good.
So they were, they give it out here in the next day or two, so, you know, we'll, I'll keep after them.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other items for the Finance and Personnel Committee? I think we're done.
Mayor, do you have anything to add to anything?
Nothing, we're good.
It is 8:34, we're going to call it an evening.
It's an evening.
Evening.